Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of Education regular meeting October 12th to order. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
May call the roll.
Herzog.
Here.
Karins.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Rais.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
Dewitt.
Here.
You're in the corner.
Thank you. And now, if you'd all like to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every day and justice brought. Thank you, everyone. Now, I'd like to invite Kristi Levy, Principal at Vell Phillips, to give us some highlights of what's happening at our newest school.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. We have had a really exciting start to our school year unlike any other that we've had before. We really started our highlight of our beginning of the year with our community open house. And we had an event planned that really brought our whole community together, which was both celebratory but also a really great opportunity for us to say thank you to all of our community supporters. Michael Phillips was able to join us, who was Vell Phillips' son, and was able to both tour the building and speak to our families and our community members. And so, that really has opened up a lot of opportunities for us to collaborate with our community at large. So, we are currently working on opportunities to partner with local organizations to provide student mentoring. We're focusing on really bringing up student engagement this year through leadership opportunities in our building for students that look like lots of different opportunities so that students don't have to just pick one thing. So, thinking kind of like beyond student council, what are other opportunities for students to lead in our building? And then, for staff professionally, really focusing on some targeted literacy strategies and how we continue to make gains in our classroom through all of those pieces that are kind of wrapping around together. So, we're settling into routines. Kids are prideful about our school and what it means for them to be able to attend there. So, we're really just continuing to capitalize on that engagement and move forward with our kids.
That's great. Any questions? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestry of homelands of the whole Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Next is the approval of the agenda. Any changes? Okay. Second.
Wright and Carlin?
Yes.
Yes. Call the roll, please.
Karins.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Board President's report. I do not have a prepared report for this evening because I wanted to be sure that we spent as much time as necessary on the tax levy and the financial information this evening. Superintendent's report.
All right. So, Charlotte's here tonight. Unfortunately, Eva is not able to be with us, is ill. So, Charlotte's here tonight to provide the Oshkosh High Schools, both high school reports. So, Charlotte, take it away.
All right. So, we're starting with North. So, all right. So, last week for North was Homecoming Week, and they dressed up with celebration, pep rallies and parade leading up to homecoming on Saturday, October 7th. The most spirited Spartans won gift cards, and the most spirited staff was treated to a luncheon. Homecoming royalty was announced at Friday's pep rally as Sanai Pettis and Giovanni Sandria Rodriguez. There it goes. All right. Before our big homecoming game against West, we had our parade where clubs at North walked or rode floats from Roosevelt Elementary to Titan Stadium, and a tailgate party where we grilled out and partied to music. The homecoming game ended with West as the victor. Oshkosh North Choirs is holding their concert next week, Wednesday, at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. The theme for the concert is a Corral Feast. Please feel free to bring non-perishable items that North Choirs will donate to the Oshkosh Food Pantry. North Band marched at the homecoming parade and performed during the halftime show on Friday, the 6th, with songs from High School Musical and Phantom of the Opera. For football this year, the football team has won the seven with a 14% win rate, and our last game on Friday, the 13th. Volleyball has 10% win rate and is three to seven. Boys soccer is four to 11 so far this year with a 28% win rate. And the dance team gave an amazing performance at Friday's pep assembly and homecoming game. They gave it their all and were phenomenal. Thank you for checking this, Barbie. Okay. And now, what's going on Wildcats? So, for past events, we had Homecoming Week. On the bottom, you can see some of our lovely staff dressed up for Barbie versus Ken Day. Up on top there, we have one of the homecoming parade floats, and you can see the guy who's all green because our theme was A Night in New York. So, we had many people dress up as the Statue of Liberty. The homecoming game and pep rally, our homecoming game, we won 40 to 23. Our pep rally was tons of fun. You can see Wiley down there. We had all sorts of games such as musical chairs, tug of war. We do a Sunday relay where students put Sunday toppings on teachers. The week prior to homecoming was the Activity Fair, where all of the different clubs such as Mock Trial, Index, Sources of Strength, Green Alarm, et cetera recruit freshmen to join their clubs and get involved and participate. As far as upcoming events, the cross-country conference meet is tomorrow in Kekana. Best of luck to everyone on that. Kate Conger and Keegan Potter are going to state for girls' doubles in tennis. They did last year as well. We are super proud of them and wish them best. And varsity soccer begins their playoffs this coming week, and we'll see what comes of that. And that is what's going on with the Wildcats. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte. All right. And then, we'll transition into the Superintendent's Good News Report. First of all, second graders at Shapiro STEM Academy were able to practice engineering concepts through cooking. They modified a recipe and made plain cinnamon sugar and brown sugar cinnamon applesauce. They, of course, got to taste tests to decide what the best recipe was that they liked. So, what a delicious way to learn about engineering. It looks like fun and appropriate for the season. During our last Staff Professional Development Day on Friday, our literacy coaches collaborated with teachers to provide the new writing curriculum support. We know that through this engagement, our staff, we know that engagement of our staff is critical to the success of our students. In addition to the work with students, staff spend an enormous amount of time strengthening their own skills and supporting each other's professional growth. Thank you to those leaders in literacy. The Oshkosh North Football Program recently celebrated its Most Influential Teacher Night. Ten senior football players selected the most influential teacher from K-12, and the teachers and players were announced as part of the starting lineups for the North versus Kimberly football game. Teachers have a lasting impact on our students, and the opportunity to lift up our exceptional educators is incredible. So, thank you to those educators. Congratulations. This year, we are piloting a hydroponic program at Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High Schools. Students will grow five types of lettuce and herbs to get a real hydroponic farm-to-table experience. The first harvest will take place in November. We're excited to see students and staff embracing a hands-on learning experience. Oshkosh North's FBTC entrepreneurial class had the opportunity to learn from guest speaker Colin Tremmel, Economic Development Director for the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. Students were able to learn about current trends and business developments in Oshkosh, as well as many of the community resources available to entrepreneurs. We love welcoming community members and business leaders into our schools and are grateful for the real-world experience they're able to share with our students. As you remember, Oshkosh is the first public school district in the area to develop our adapted sports league. Our incredible special education team members came up with this idea over four years ago, and since then, we've been a model for surrounding districts. This year, we are thrilled to see our neighbors jumping, joining us in providing the space for students of all abilities to compete in high school sports. Our seasons include soccer, floor hockey, and wiffle ball. A highlight reel of the recent, highlight reel of the recent North versus West Adaptive Sports League soccer game is available, and you can see everyone involved experience the wins from, or everybody involved are winners. So, congratulations to all of the athletes and staff that participated in that. So, thank you for making that possible. Our students are, our classrooms are filled with innovative learning strategies. Eighth graders at Perry Tipler are using vertical whiteboards to increase math engagement in their classroom. Critical whiteboards are visually engaging and help reinforce the material so that all students can be actively participating in the lesson. This is a great example of how education and our learning strategies evolved to meet the needs of every learner, and we are grateful for our talented educators who not only embrace these new strategies but have an incredible ability to ensure that all students are supported. So, you get a glimpse of what that looks like. Third graders at Oakwood Elementary recently combined coding with the life cycle in an innovative science, technology, engineering, and math lesson. The students used color sequence codes to give their UzoBot robots directions and actions to complete. The robots maneuvered around maps and the students provided, maps that the students provided, and third graders were challenged to compare their robot actions to the actions apparent in the life cycle of animals of their choosing. This year, all of our elementary schools have access to these unique robots as part of our new STEM curriculum. We recently met up with a few of our fantastic custodians, so we want to recognize them. Their deep commitment to our school communities, unique and diverse set of skills, and love for building relationships with our students, and friendship for team members across the district were common themes that were shared in our conversations. We had, we have just over 50 custodians serving our student schools and districts and are so grateful for all that they do. So, thank you for all of their service. And finally, just a list of activities that I've been fortunate enough to be able to participate in over the last couple of weeks. And that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. District Administrator's Supplemental Reports. First one is a referendum of the date. Menominee Elementary School Construction, Mr. Fox, Mr. Considine. It's going up fast.
Good evening. And thank you. This month's report, I'd like to start out by saying that we are on schedule and are within budget, as you had stated, the building is going up fast. So, they've been very busy taking advantage of the good weather. So, completely understandable. In the last 30 days, as you may have seen, the gymnasium block walls have been fully constructed to the proper elevation. The roof, the structural steel and deck have been set in place, and the rubber roofing is actually being placed this week to be finished at the end of this week so that that gymnasium will be, for the most part, weather tight. Exterior wall foundation for the cafeteria is complete. That's on the east side of the gymnasium. Underground utilities have been brought into the footprint of the building or onto the site anyhow. They'll be brought into the building at a future date. Gymnasium, as I said, rubber roof installation is ongoing, actually almost to completion. You're going to hear us again talk about Area A, B, C, D throughout this project. So, Area A is actually the piece that they are working on to the west of the gymnasium. That is second, third on the first grade, and is fourth and fifth on the upper floor. So, second, third grade interior exterior block wall construction is ongoing, nearing completion. They're actually adding some of the precast spancrete on the, what will be the ceiling of the first floor, the floor of the second floor, so they're busy installing that as And some photos to help you, to help illustrate what we just spoke about. Upper left is the, of course, the gymnasium. This is before they put the roofing material on, so it's kind of nice that you get a sense of space and light before it gets pretty dark with that roofing material. To your far right is actually standing in that second, third grade pod, if you will. It's at the end of the hallway. You're looking down the hallway toward the cafeteria. You can see the classrooms begin to take form on your right. You can see the gymnasium to your left. And on the bottom picture center is actually just reverse of the position. It's actually standing in that same hallway that you're looking at, looking toward, those two large openings are actually the stairwell going from first into second floor in that same A wing. Upper left is from a street view, Grove, looking at the A Building addition. You can see the gymnasium to your left. You can see the A Wing, first and second floor. Again, that's grades two through five. The parking lot ultimately will be in front of you, and they're actually adding on to the left side, if you will, or the north of that existing structure now, which are going to be, as you're driving by, you'll start to see block coming out of the ground. Those are your support rooms, boiler room, electrical room, food service, storage, that type of, those types of services. So, as you start to see that block coming out of the ground, you know what that is. To your right, you can see the foundation walls at the bottom right of that picture. That is actually the secure entryway. And between a secure entryway and the gymnasium, that is all the cafeteria. They still have yet to build out the kitchen and the, and the servery, but largely, that footprint will be the cafeteria in the future. And the bottom picture is south of the structure, it's almost in a U shape. This building is a reverse C or U, depending how you're looking at it. So, we've got the A Building, second through five. You're going to have the cafeteria, administration, and then kindergarten, first grade. So, it's going to look like a U based on where I'm standing, where I took that photograph. So, this gives you an illustration of what the, if you will, the interior courtyard or that wing of the building is shaping up to be. In the next 30 days, we expect load-bearing walls on the north side of the gymnasium to be complete. Again, those are going to be your support pieces of the building, supporting custodial and kitchen. Area A, non-load-bearing walls, interior walls. So, everywhere where I was just standing in the educational wing of second through five, we're going to see the load-bearing and interior non-load-bearing walls made of masonry block, complete. Structural steel and precast plank will be set into place in that same area. That has already begun, but that will be completed in the next month. MEPs are your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens will continue, and they'll be an ongoing process over the next three to four months at least. And structural steel and masonry load-bearing walls will start in Section B, which is your Any questions on the progress or questions on what you're seeing or anything we can help better define for the project? It's going up fast.
Yeah.
That's all I heard from the team. It's going up fast.
It is. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Next, Third Friday Enrollment Update, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
So, on the third Friday of every September in the state of Wisconsin, we count how many students are with us in our schools. So, this year on September 15th, we have 9,000, officially 9,121 students were counted on that particular day. We continue to see that slow decline as predicted within our, within our enrollment. In the graph that you provided in the written report, you can see we were 9,148 the year before, and this year, we're sitting at 9,121. The second graph that you had in your report is from the 2017-18 enrollment study. In other words, looking at how many students or how many children would be in our boundaries at a particular time, and you can see the prediction of decreasing enrollment and decreasing births within our Oshkosh area school district boundaries. That counts for some of our decline, but as you can see in the last graph within that report, we continue to have a net loss when it comes to open enrollment. And so, we were at negative 266. We have 266 more students that are open enrolling out. So, for that count, there are 196 students that are not from Oshkosh that open enroll in, and we have 462 students that open enroll out. So, that is the actual counts and the numbers for this school, for the school year. And why is that important? Because our student enrollment or our student full-time equivalent counts help drive our revenue, our revenue formulas.
Do you have any additional comments in regards to students in versus students out?
So, we will probably get to some of that when it comes to our culture and climate survey and when we're reviewing those results in our upcoming workshop and see what some of our families are saying about why they are staying in the Oshkosh area school district, and will also give us some insight in maybe why some of our families are leaving the school district.
Good. Look forward to that. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. One of the things we heard last night at the CISA 6 Board of Control from Ted Nitsky was the importance of promoting for all of our districts, all 39 CISA districts, the importance of our early childhood programs and our, especially then moving into K-2. According to his data, if students are in a particular location through grade two, they are pretty much likely to finish out in that school and not transfer. So, we've heard that before, and I'm hoping that at some point, we will have a report on how are we promoting our early learning and our, and our primary grade education programs so that we do a good job of communicating these programs to our public so we can attract and retain students at that level.
Can I ask a follow-up about that?
Sure.
Was he saying if students stay in the same school up through second grade, they're most likely to stay in the district? Or saying that whatever school kids are in second grade?
Stay in the district.
Yes. But I mean, is the data from, collected from like when they enter in our 4K programs through second grade or just the second grade year?
I don't think he was looking just at Oshkosh. I think he was looking more broadly. So, I'm not sure. Following your question, I'm sorry.
You had said, I know I wish I'd done right what you said, that the data, when they look at second grade attendance, indicates whether they will stay in a district. And I'm wondering if that's data of the students who started in a school and stayed through second grade or if the data is just looking at second grade?
No, I think it's the K-2 and then looking at some later grade level and where they, they were in those earlier grades.
It includes before just second grade.
I think so.
That's what I was, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, we're down 37 total students from last year?
Yep.
What was our projection?
Our projection?
Yeah. Were we projecting, like based off of previous trends, to be down like, I don't know, like 60 or 100 students?
Correct. We've been averaging between 50 and 60 students for, you know, declining down. So, this is a slightly less decline than we were anticipating. But the point is, is that we were anticipating a continued decline, and we are, like, we are rightsizing right into our four-phase consolidation plan. So, as we were looking at this and the number of classrooms and what we're planning for the Oshkosh area school district, we are, we are moving right into that consolidation plan. Where we, if I can offer an opinion here, where we need to work is on the open enrollment piece. And so, how can we make sure that we are providing the services and the environment that our families want here in the Oshkosh area school district?
Is the data consistent from school to school? Or do we have data on where we're losing more students than other students based on?
Yeah. Well, we know, we know where the open enrollment pieces are, and I don't have that in front of me to say like which, which schools are higher open.
In our own district? Like, are more kids going to Traeger and less to South Park? Or more going to, I mean, where are we losing more kids in our, or gaining more kids?
So, like in or, like in or out? So, like inside of our school district?
Yeah.
We have the, families have the opportunity to request out of attendance area. In other words, to go to a different school within our, within our school district boundaries. And if we have room, we honor those requests. At the same time, we also have families that are open enrolling out to other school districts, and we have families from outside the Oshkosh area school district open enrolling in. And so, I think there's also, there's often this perception that we have certain schools that are trying to out of attendance area or even open enroll to like other schools. Within our school district piece, we absolutely have families for many different reasons asking to go into out of attendance area to every single one of our schools. So, when we're in that meeting, we have families requesting to move into other areas of school for many different reasons, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I was just wondering if there's any trends on, you know, within our district that we could learn from?
So, when we get to the, when we get to the part within the board workshop where we're talking about reasons that families are staying within the school district, they talk about location being one of the prime reasons. And one of the prime reasons for out of attendance area is in requesting different, to go to different schools is based on the location of their work or their childcare, or this is where family members are located and where my child would go after school or being dropped off. So, that's a very common out of attendance area request.
Okay. We do know, in talking to our registrar, as far as, we do have students from the outside. I don't have the exact number, but we do have many families from the outside asking for open enrollment, but asking, open enrollment specifically to like Traeger, for example, where we don't have room to be able to accept them. We would offer the opportunity for them to come to any of our other schools, and many times, it's kind of like, I don't want to go to Traeger, or if I can't go to Traeger, then I'm not going to come as an open enrollment student. So, that would be something that, again, we can, we can drill down on a little bit and get some themes, but that's generally kind of the, the open enrollment desired destination from what we've seen. Okay. I'll pardon that.
So, other than the survey that you mentioned that was going to be going out, are we asking why these families and children are leaving? I mean, at that moment, I feel like it would be a good opportunity to fix something, maybe?
Sure. So, when, when families open enroll, they apply to open enroll on the Department of Public Instruction site to be able to do that. And so, at that time, like, we don't, it's not like a phone call and asking, you know, whether, why are you open enrolling? Why are you not in that moment? We did do a survey prior to COVID. So, I want to say in 2018, we have partnered with the UW Oshkosh Business, Business Department, and they worked with us on doing surveys and contacting the families that haven't opened enroll. And so, we found in that particular survey, at that time was based, could be on location, but it was also about services. It was about learning environment. It was about their, you know, their choice of how they wanted to educate their child. There were several of the different reasons at that point in time.
Thank you.
I had a quick question on Table 12, where it's the summary of 4K to 12 enrollment projections?
Mm-hmm.
And you provided data projected through '27, '28 school year? Gosh, that seems so far away. Those numbers seem higher than our count that we just had, so what am I missing?
Like?
So, those, those have been the projections from the UW Population Lab?
Oh.
And that would have been pre, you know, pre-COVID numbers. So, so looking at birth rates and, and different trends that they would take a look at in their methodologies, that represents four different methodologies?
I see.
That they ran from '28, '19 through '27, '28. So, based on the information that they had at that point?
I got you.
So, and again, and that's what's graphed in the graph right above that.
Okay.
That's, those numbers are what are graphed. So, again, as you can see.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One last question, and then we'll get into some of this other stuff later on. But do you know how many kids we didn't take into the district because we couldn't fit them into Traeger?
I do, we can find that out, but we, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have one final question. You'll probably remember better than I. At one point, when we had someone leave the district, we did a questionnaire. We called them or we contacted them somehow to find out the reason that they were leaving. Do we still do that?
A family exit survey?
A family exit survey.
We are currently not doing a family exit survey.
I just remember that. I just remember that came up, some very interesting information that we were able to address and it might be something that we consider doing again in the future.
I think it would help a lot. I think that it's absolutely worth it. Okay.
I have a question.
Dr. Herzak.
I'm concerned about the open enrollment history showing the net loss. I can understand in 2021, because that was a full COVID year, but those numbers have not rebounded to pre-COVID levels. I know that one of the things we look to implement to stem the tide of the larger number going out than coming in was the e-Academy. Do we have any data showing what's going on with the e-Academy and are we attracting more people through that? That would be helpful to know. And then another thing I think that would be helpful, might be difficult to get, but if we could get the enrollment data on the private schools in the area, that is, are they also showing increases, decreases? What, what are those numbers looking like? We know that, for example, two of the, I think, larger, these two of the, the private schools in the area have put additions on within the last three to five years. One added a middle school and one did a revamp so that they have more elementary students on their, their K through 12 campus. But I think that would be helpful to know what's happening in those other schools. I know the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has reported that the smallest, excuse me, the largest group of students by grade level that currently exists throughout the state is the juniors in high school and that we're going to see a downward trend before we see those numbers coming up. So this is not unique to Oshkosh, but I agree with others who have spoken tonight that it would be great to find out why people are not coming or why they're transferring out and what can we do about that to better serve our community. So that's all I have.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I think it's important to understand as well that the work that I believe that the district is doing to lay the foundation for this. So maybe if we, if we stabilize a little bit, I don't know the direct correlation, but working on literacy scores and investing into our structure, infrastructure, including our new buildings, the consolidation plan, the way to save some money, we're going to get into that conversation later as well. But we are also 15 miles away, a brand new high school that will not help people coming in. It has a chance to pull. So we also have a, an opportunity coming up with the next few phases of this referendum as well to also help with those numbers too. So I think there's progress that we are making towards that and I believe that down the road, we're going to see that rebound. But I do agree that the open enrollment students leaving, you know, we expected the numbers to dip, but that's the one that I would hope that we focus on in whatever way we can.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nihans, budget variance, ester fund update.
The budget report that you have is with the operating through September, there, the funds at this point seem to be running pretty well. Nothing too surprising for, for a month into the school year, a couple of months into the actual budget year. Are there any questions on the report itself? Again, it's pretty early to take a whole lot in on this. We're, we're really not all that far into the spending.
Any questions about the budget variance? Okay, thank you. And if we could move on then to budget questions on tax levy, please.
Hearing the concerns with the tax levy and a 12% increase from the budget hearing and that was all part of trying to manage a mill rate to make sure we could layer in all the facility plans that we have to do in a short amount of time, trying to get long-term, long-term assessability and financial planning for that. We are presenting a shift off of that for a 4% increase based on the tax levy instead of the mill rate. You have that material, you have that included in your materials. Just to be clear though, for everybody, changes, whether we're talking the mill rate or the tax levy, a 4% increase in the tax levy could very well mean there are people that are going to have tax decreases in, in our municipalities. We don't control the tax, the assessments or what the municipalities tax. We control the mill rate and that's what gets distributed off of that. And the mill rate is obviously part of, it's calculated off of the property taxes and our valuation. So there are some, some levers out there on that. One thing also that was stated that I think we really need to correct, the school voucher program is part of the revenue limit formula that is set by DPI. I do not have any control other than to remove it, which means we lose that money. That money directly comes out of our June aid payment. It's a reduction, not an addition. We lose that money. So DPI hardwires that into the revenue limit formula that will get released Friday on what that actual total dollar amount is. So we, we do have the ability, you can remove that and not tax for that. That money then just comes out of our operating budget with no revenue side. The deduction happens in June. It is again, it is a deduction on that. So I guess I'll open it up at that point and see if there is a lot in the materials that, that you guys received. What, what questions do you guys, do you have?
Well, sticking with the voucher program regarding that, I'm guessing we're not the only district in the state that does it this way. I'm assuming every district does it this way.
Correct. Again, it would, if I was arbitrarily just increasing the revenue limit, we'd have a penalty for that same amount by DPI. They do, they do not allow me to control that part of the revenue limit formula.
And then there are a couple of districts though, within the state that get funded differently than that, right? Is that, is it Milwaukee?
Yeah, there's, there's the Milwaukee and the Racine charter programs are funded completely differently.
So if that gets brought up, like that's, that's a totally different system.
Correct.
We are a part of.
Correct. That's, that's not the private voucher, the choice program.
Okay.
Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. I believe you've used a number like 4.9 million is what the cost of the voucher program was this past year. Is that somewhat close?
It's in the, it's in the area.
Okay. So if we did not tax for that, we would have to reduce our budget and our services to our students by 4.9 million dollars. Is that accurate?
Correct. That money comes out of our state aid at the end of the year. So our state aid gets, we don't have a revenue, a revenue offset for the deduction from the expense from the state to pay for the program. So we would have funded a, whatever that voucher dollar amount is for 4.9, we would have funded that with no revenue. So that would have come out of operations.
I, I continue to believe that there is misunderstanding, excuse me, on the part of the general public about vouchers and that some people believe that vouchers are free. I usually say they are to the child and the family who qualify for them, but the rest of us as taxpayers pay for that tuition, correct?
Correct.
Through our taxes.
Yes.
So.
And, and again, that dollar amount, I, I fully anticipate that everything shown for you with numbers for the tax levy right now, those are all for the most part guesses at this point. We, we find out from DPI Friday on most of the numbers. So there's going to be the property valuation truly gets set Friday. The voucher numbers are completely, I mean, unknown at this point. We have no idea what those numbers are going to be. They don't give us any kind of an idea of what enrollment is or was. So those numbers are going to come in, that'll get hardwired in as well. So there, and our enrollment is just getting finalized. That's another big part of, part of the equation. So there, there are some moving parts. State aid actually gets calculated and will get computed out on Friday as well. So if our state aid doesn't come in quite as high as I was expecting, the local tax levy will go up to, to make up for that because that's the two parts of that equation.
So we really don't have much of a choice when it comes to, let me, let me rephrase that because the word choices, choice has different meanings. As a, as a board and as a district, we don't have many options as far as paying for these voucher students other than to tax the local taxpayer to pay for that. Otherwise that money comes and is taken away from the public school students, their services and their instruction and facilities during the year.
Correct. The way, the way it currently works, you, your, the school board's option is to levy for them, add them into your levy to help offset the subtraction that's going to happen in June. Because that subtraction in June is going to happen regardless. So again, there's, there's been advocacy to get the voucher program off of the property taxes. In fact, School Choice Wisconsin actually is advocating for that as well. They would like this out of the property tax equation and figure out a different way for the state to fund it, whether it's through the county or a different way. But they also do not like it being funded through property taxes.
Well, I can tell you from meetings I attend with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards that those districts who have significant voucher students would like to see this move to the state. And I know that Ted Nitsky from CISA 6 feels the same way. This puts quite a burden on the local taxpayer.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to be honest and start by saying I wasn't going to vote for the 12% increase because I didn't feel like it was the right thing to do in this community, giving the economic conditions that we're currently in. Secondly, if we stripped out at 4%, and people can choose their school, private schools provide good services, public schools do too. If we stripped out the voucher program and if the state took care of that on their own, our budget, and tell me if I'm correct or not, would it reflect a 0.73 cent decrease in our mill rate? Is that correct?
For what we're anticipating or what it was?
Or what we'd anticipate?
I'm anticipating right now, if, if the numbers I showed you are what the vouchers come in, I believe it's 88 cents.
So we would reduce our mill rate?
Correct.
If that was pulled out.
If that was completely, if vouchers didn't exist funding the way they currently do.
And we're managing our own budget?
Then, then the tax levy automatically drops 88 cents.
Our, our mill rate would drop 88 cents.
Our mill rate does. Yeah, tax levy goes down by that. I believe we're budgeting in close to six and a half, 6.9 million for vouchers.
And how much interest in debt would we pay off with this current budget proposal of 4%?
At 4%? I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I can get that for you, but I don't have what the additional Fund 39 levy is off of that.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Currents?
Can we just talk through kind of the, the change from the 12% to the 4%? What the thinking is on that? What that looks like going forward and, and you know?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I can start and then Drew. So yeah, so the, the change from the 12% to the 4% again would be in response to, from, you know, as a community, you know, community request, you know, related to reducing the, the current burden that we would put on compared to that 12%. So it's a, a significant reduction from what we had talked about in September. I think the idea though, that we want to be able to keep in mind is, is we need to be immediately responsive. We also need to make sure that we're keeping in mind our needs for phase two and phase three for our long-range facilities plan. And so the idea is to be able to, you know, do a stepped approach to make sure that we can get ourselves to a reasonable capacity to be able to go to referendum as we had talked about in earlier meetings on April of 2025 for phase two and April of 2029 for phase three and have those be reasonable increases. And so we would anticipate, you know, a 4% increase this year and then we'll take a look at what it would be next year, but there'll likely be some step up, you know, as we would go instead of taking that, that lead to 12% for, for this year. So, so that's, that's essentially, you know, what this difference in approach would be, which I think is, is much more again, responsive to what we're hearing from the community. So we want to be able to provide that as an option tonight. So I don't know, Drew, if you had anything else to add to that?
No, I, I think you, you summed it up pretty well.
Forgive me if you answered this, but how did we go from like, how did we come up with this 4%? With, I mean, did you, I don't, I'm not sure if you had mentioned anything.
We, we had lots of discussions over where, where to try to land on this and what, given the current numbers and where we want to land, what makes sense to do a stepped approach? The, the downfall, if there's, if you want to call it a downfall, the downfall to a stepped approach is you're going to have more stepped approaches for a longer period of time to get where you need to get rather than we were going to be where we needed to be and then everything with the property valuation increases and everything that you would anticipate moving forward, the levy was going to start decreasing because we need, we were going to be flat after that. So now we're going to be seeing somewhere between a 4 and a 7% increase until we can hit that level because we're not going to be paying off as much debt and there's more to layer in. So what, what we needed was, and, and again, this is going to change because we're not, if, if we're shifting philosophy, we, we needed 27 and a half million dollars for phase two. We were going to be at that levy. So next year would have been tax relief, tax relief, stay, stay flat. And if we, if we had levied that way, we would have been flat and phase three needed 28.2 million. Without levying additional, which again, that, that also meant a 12% tax levy increase this year, not tax increase, but tax levy increase. To do it a stepped approach, we're going to have to step from $20 million to $27 million and make those steps. And then we're going to have to probably step in another year or two because we aren't able to schedule our debt the same way on the back end. So there's going to be a, a lot more moving parts for a little bit longer period of time. There'll be smaller, smaller increments as we go. So that was kind of the advantages and disadvantages of each plan. Did that help?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
The one thing that I like about this whole plan is that for so many years, our community has been, ooh, do you think we can do a new school? Ooh, let's do a new school. And this really takes away the reactive approach and makes it a more proactive approach for the community and for phase two and for phase three. So we are able to plan better and not react. And if the enrollment is going down, then we're able to react to that as well. And as far, it's certainly more fiscally responsible to be able to plan these phases than it is to either not have a new school or to just jump into it without understanding the implications and what comes next. And that's one thing phase one through four has been able to lay out is what comes next. And I think for our board and boards that are to be and for our community, that's very, very important and something we haven't seen in the past.
I'd also like that. I just remembered another point back to Mrs. Dewett and what, what she had asked. As we were having that decision and having those discussions, one of the primary factors for me to land at 4%, net new construction in Oshkosh is 1.3% right now. So what that means is 1.3% of our overall taxing, the, the valuation increase. So what that means is 1.3% of our overall taxing, the, the valuation increase is from property owners that never paid taxes here before. So they automatically come off of that 4%. So that automatically brings it down to 2.7. And then the new public school tax credit that the state passed in the biennium, that's infusing another 2 and a half or $3 million of tax relief into our municipalities. We just don't know how that hits and how those municipalities are going to do those. But that's why I, I said, there's going to be people that see a tax decrease, even though we're increasing our levy by 4%. Because 1.3 is going to the net new construction and we're left with 2.7 and it's, there, there are good odds that the tax credit is going to take care of that for some, some people.
Mrs. Slajic?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that if we say we are increasing our tax levy by 12%, that is not the same as saying property tax values are raised 12%.
Property tax values increased 9.94% overall.
Okay.
So the, the 12% tax levy increase was what it would, what our tax levy got to to keep the mill rate at that 8.75.
Yeah.
Which was our target.
So the other thing I think I'm hearing is with this stepped approach, will we end up paying more debt over time? Or is that not accurate?
We'll pay more interest.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
We will, we will pay more interest.
We're going to pay more interest and we're going to get less state aid. So property taxes will go up because state aid is going to come down because we're not paying as much. So when your expenses come down, you pay more. So, so for example, if we had not, if we had only paid in our debt schedule what we owed last fiscal year, the local taxes would have gone up 30 cents on the mill rate because that's the difference in aid we wouldn't have received anymore from that.
Yeah.
So there's, again, there's, there's that balance weighing of how much do you levy additional on the taxes and how much of an offset do you get on the other side?
Yeah. And we've always, we've always been like net gainers on the state aid side.
Yeah, we're positively aided.
Recently, because I don't know the whole history of. My other question, so the difference between the 12% and the 4% is $5,750,000. We don't know how much we're sending to voucher schools yet, but what's your estimate of what that will be?
Oh, I didn't put that in there. I believe there is like 6.6 million or 6.9 million?
I think you said 6.9 before.
Some, somewhere in that. Again, that's a, that's a complete guess.
Yeah.
Based on the increases.
We don't have the numbers yet.
That they, that they get from, on the finance side and based on enrollment numbers they had last year. But that's a complete guess. If it's, if it's lower than that, then the tax value, the valuation just goes down. The levy does.
Okay. So I'm just kind of seeing a correlation there between the amount of money that we're walking away from and the amount of money that we then are kind of siphoned through to the private schools. That's why that question's relevant for me. I, I am a team player. I know I'm just one of seven board members and I have a great deal of respect for our administrators and the recommendations that you make. That said, I will say that my preference is the 12%. I have some reasons for that. The main one just being that I'm very passionate about public education. I've spent a lot of time studying what makes schools great. The top performing public schools in the nation and also internationally. I continually look at what makes them be top performing schools and they are high spending schools. There's just a report put out about the public of defense schools are the top performing schools in the nation right now. And they are the schools that have the highest budget, the highest per pupil spending. So it's, it's difficult to say, you know, support the higher percentage because I'm hearing that from the community that that has some concerns and I do think those are valid. I just also have concerns about making sure that we set ourselves up for success, making sure that we stick to our promises about being a top performing district, being a destination district. And for as long as I've lived in Oshkosh, you know, the past 13 years, I've heard about how historically we're a low spending district and those decisions are made here at this table. And so those are just some of the reasons why I personally would choose the 12%. But again, like I said, I'm, I'm a team player. I know I'm just one of seven and I appreciate that Mr. Wright shared that he would not support the 12% because, because I do respect you and your opinions. I like that we can agree or disagree politely.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But yeah, that's what I'm trying to do is disagree politely because I, it's very hard for me to walk away from $5,750,000 thinking about the different things that we do with that money, paying the voucher bill that we have to pay. And just the facilities updates that we need to make even outside of going to referendum. You know, there's always maintenance costs, staffing raises that just, I feel like I'm just walking away from a lot of potentially really good things.
I just want to be clear that the additional money doesn't go to any of those operations.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's not an operations based, we're, we're not doing an operations decision on that. This, this is truly, do we pay debt early?
Yes.
Or don't we?
That's true.
So there, there is a clear distinction. We, we need to be clear, especially with the taxpayers, that this is truly, the, the additional levy truly pays debt early and it's helping the next two phases be able to fit more comfortably. But we still are, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable at a 4% and a 4% or a 4% and let's see what it's going to be next year. We can target 4% and see where we're going. But I'm, I'm still confident we have a plan for Phase 2 and Phase 3 to, to still minimize impact on taxpayers. Now it's going to be a little bigger than what we were looking before, but it's still not going to be something that I, I feel puts either, either phase of the projects in, in a financial jeopardy of just being out of reach for the taxpayers.
Thank you for that correction because I do, I hear the money and I think of all the things I know that that equates to. But that's where I started with the whole, we're paying more interest over time. So thanks for bringing me back to my starting point, but that's, that's what we're really voting on and getting at. All right.
I had a question.
I had a question about the community feedback. We had somebody who came and spoke at our meeting about the budget and he, a little bit confused about some of the things that he had said in our meeting, like I don't think he fully understood the budget and the impact. And then I saw an email that came to the board. Was there a community feedback in another forum, like a listening session or something? Aside from those two, I didn't really hear much about.
No, we, we didn't have anything in listening session tonight. I think it was, you know, based on, you know, based on those conversations and then I think, you know, certainly all individual board members have, you know, conversations in their, you know, with, represent with their constituency and that type of thing. But yeah, no, otherwise formally communications were, were.
Just wondering.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Currents?
So first and foremost, we're talking about the levy because we have to fund a budget that we approved a couple of weeks ago. So we have to figure out a way that we're going to fund that budget. So it's kind of one of two options. We found it was going to be 12%. Now we can fund it at 4, but it comes at the, I'm not wording this correctly. It's going to affect our ability to pay off our debt differently. And so we're kind of giving some relief now to extend that debt a little longer. Is that fair?
Correct.
And so we're listening to our community that maybe that's the route we want to go. I think it's also important to point out that we have been fiscally responsible with how we've paid off our debt and saved $40 million. And so, you know, we talk about how do we tell our own story? I think that's an important piece to that too, that we are trying to step this up to get to a place where we can still pass this because our board direction is, it is imperative that we get through our facilities plan, that we have Phase 2, Phase 3 and possibly Phase 4 down the road. We talk about open enrollment. We talk about kids leaving the district. And we talk about what that's going to be. New buildings matter. Saving all that money on our operational costs. Once Menominee is up and running between that and Vell Phillips, we're saving $1.5 million a year in operational costs. So there is savings down the road as we go through this. I think now is, we're, we have to talk about how do we fund the budget that we approved? And what's the right way to go about it? I, if we can do it at 4% and we can get to where we want to be down the road and we don't affect the important parts of Phase 2 and Phase 3, then I support that if we can do that. We can share that with the community that we can get creative and come up with solutions that will help people, help people who have to buy eggs, have to pay for their mortgage, right? It's, it's a difficult time for some people and we hear you. And so I think that if we can get there with 4%, I've seen the, the numbers on this that we can get there. But I also understand Liz completely, like education is the bedrock of this community. It's the reason why I ran for school board. It affects everything. It affects our economy. It affects our schools. It affects our property values. It is the best insurance that we have for our community. And so we have to look at all of that. In a perfect world, yeah, I would love to spend as much money as we possibly can in education because it is easily the most important thing that we have to focus on and that will make significant change in our community. But we don't live in that perfect world. And so if this gets us there to where we want to be, then I support that.
Thank you. I also wanted to say that all of the numbers are available on the district website. If you click on Board and go to the board meeting, you will see all the wonderful graphs and all the numbers that we've been talking about tonight. Okay. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman.
Are there any other reports this evening?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Did, part of this conversation was to get to a place where we can vote on that tax levy amount at the next board meeting? Did we get to a place where we have given enough feedback as to what direction we want that to go? I mean, I'm just curious, Dr. Davis, like, did you need more direction as to what that looks like? Or are we confident with that conversation?
I think I'm, I'm confident. I mean, if any board members have any other, you know, input into that prior to, prior to moving on, I mean, feel, feel free, but otherwise.
I believe under the state statute, we have to vote by the end of October. So.
Yes.
Unless we have another meeting, excuse me, beyond October 25th, we have to vote in two weeks.
I'm just saying that now, now is kind of the time if we have any more thoughts on this, like, you know, how we can do things differently, any alternatives to that. I think this is probably the best time.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports? No other committee reports? It does not appear that we have any non-agenda or agenda-related public forum, so we will bypass that. Next, we have a workshop and the lead presenter is Mrs. Neiman. And Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Thank you, everyone. Katie Neiman, committee process director for the school district. Tonight, this is sort of a two-phase workshop, let's say. This first portion will focus on our net promoter score, process, and KPI workshop. And the second portion will focus on the results of our culture and climate survey. So first off, the net promoter score lies within our engagement and communication core area. And that is centered around building positive relationships with all of our stakeholders through focused and intentional communication. So providing a little bit of background on what we mean by net promoter score. A net promoter score survey is really a one, usually a one-question survey to gather customer satisfaction. Typically, it's asked in the frame of, on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely are you to recommend X, Y, Z? It groups feedback into three categories. So how you reply, you respond to that. Promoters are those responding with a 9 or 10. Passives respond with a 7 or 8. And then the largest section of response is detractors, responding anywhere from 0 to 6. And then the final net promoter score is calculated by subtracting the percentage of detractors from the percentage of promoters. The score itself is a number between negative 100 and 100. 0 would be the example that you have the same amount of promoters as you do detractors.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So 7 or 8 is considered passive? I'm just thinking, I've done many of those surveys in my life and I've given 8s and I, 8, it was meant to be positive. I didn't realize that that was taken as passive, but, you know, so I just, oh, interesting.
So overall, just context of why this matters and why we as a district are incorporating this into our strategic planning KPI. First and foremost, it's because we know that parent, guardian, the community, they're partners with us and their opinions matter. And they also determine our overall success. And we have a strong network of collaboration of partners supporting us and working alongside us. Their success is critical. Similarly, similarly, our reputation as the public school district matters. It matters when people choose to come here, live here, submit here, stay here. And then also just the community's commitment to investing and supporting our financial needs. A little more background. So this is the first time that we are doing this in the district. I would say it's probably unique to school districts. I'm not aware of anybody else monitoring a net promoter score. It's common in like the customer service industries. You look at like, as you're doing customer feedback, you buy a product, you get a service, you have to give those little, how did we do surveys? So we approached this as including it in our first annual culture and climate survey. That's why this is really a two-part workshop. And with this, with that being said, it's important to understand like that context. So this is the first time that we distributed a culture and climate survey district-wide was last May. Prior to that, I think it was back in 2011. So certainly it's a part of our continuous improvement efforts that we'll be continuing moving forward in that next phase is how do we grow participation to bring more value to the data that we're receiving? So just from a pure statistic standpoint, we had just over 1,000 parent responses. And of those, 834 responded specifically to the net promoter score question. The context there is obviously we have over 9,000 students in our district. So there's room for improvement as far as are our parents aware that we're pushing out this survey and how can we get them to take it?
Is there also something to be said that many people don't do surveys unless they're angry? Or frustrated?
Absolutely. It's very true.
So.
Again, not dismissing the data because data does tell us all and we can learn from it. But that is absolutely, I mean, it's true in anything. You're more likely to share your frustrations and say your phrases. So coming to what our current rating is based off of them, at one data point of about an 834 response rate is we have a net promoter score of negative 29, which gives a one-star rating. And again, that question asked specifically on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely are you to recommend Oshkosh area school districts to a friend? So in that ranking, of those 834 responses, 20% were those promoters who responded with a 9 or 10. 31% responded with a 7 or 8. And then 49% responded with a 0 to 6. So going into just celebration, first and foremost, the fact that we are doing the net promoter score survey and more broadly that we are doing the culture and climate survey is something that we want to continue to invest in and focus on. And the, the key point there is this is really meant to be a tool for our school leaders to partner with their parent organizations because this is a data point that we can collect and then it's bringing forward and together our school leaders and our parent leaders to brainstorm. This is what our parents are telling us. This is some ideas that we can use to improve specific to the school level, similar to how we approach employee engagement, including those responses to the building that can impact the change and really impact the experience for our students and families. The other point of reference again, just because.
Katie, Dr. Hesek?
Excuse me, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that key point that was written because I have heard from a variety of parents who feel that they're not listened to. They're not involved in problem solving. Administration comes to them and says, here's the plan. That's a form of shared decision-making. I make the plan and I share it with you. That's not what they're looking for. They want to be part of the solution. So the degree to which we can encourage them to participate by brainstorming, problem solving, tell us what their experiences are and then work from there. tell us what their experiences are, and then work from there, I think will help us to improve this score, and more importantly, to better serve our students. So, thank you for that.
I've heard from a lot of parents as well, and really like, our building heads, in my opinion, our principals, right, are the most important people in this. Everyone's really important, but the principal of the school, you know, builds the culture and the glue. And when I'm talking to parents, you know, if that's there, there's a lot of positive things that are going on in the school through PTO, through the principal, good communication. You know, parents are thrilled. You know, an example, when Kirby was the principal at Oakwood, and he shook every person's hand, you know, when they came to school, he greeted every single kid. Oakwood was stacked to the gills with people wanting to come and go there. You know, building relationships and everything is key. And I should probably stop there, because we got a lot more data to get to, but I'll save it. But it's vital.
Thank you. Let's continue.
The other question just to note, is as we're embracing this as a continuous improvement tool, we are exploring, you know, how else can we gauge that feedback? This one number that we're talking about was specific to parent guardian feedback in that culture and climate survey. In January, we just did a brief NPS survey question with our superintendent's advisory council, resulting in a NPS of 14. So again, as we're evolving, finding those touchpoints to reach both our parents guardians, but also other stakeholder groups that we want to.
We keep talking about if it's the same thing, and sorry for interrupting, but keeping, tell our story, right? That group has maybe better access to Dr. Davis, here's more updates, whatever that is. How do we get that story out to everybody? So, those opportunities.
So, leading us in, so again, I kind of mentioned some of these, but the opportunities for improvement, first and foremost, the data we received is valuable, and our school leaders will certainly be moving it forward, doing our partnership work. But ultimately, we do want to increase our overall participation in our culture and climate survey. Already working on action steps just to improve that, you know, current states of how we did it last year, it was sent in an email in May. Those of you that are, you know, parents, you understand, it's a very busy time. So how can we sync that up to times when our families are already in our schools during conferences or end-of-the-year type celebrations? Having QR codes available where it's something that they can do as they're waiting, but syncing that up to be more readily accessible to families. It is important to note that this survey is available in, I think it's five translation options, so that's been something that is an improvement, but it's again, how do we reach those families and ensure we get that participation, right? The other opportunity for expansion is to expand who's taking the survey. Current state was we open it up to parents and guardians. We'll be exploring doing the same for staff, as well as students in grades 5, 12. And that presents an opportunity to do some comparison, if there's things that all three of those groups are saying that are similar or very disjointed, what can we dive into to figure out those things? And then, of course, the other recommendation is diving into the recommendations, that we'll go through later in this, and then find more opportunities to use that as a touchpoint, again, as we think of how are we engaging with our community members or specific groups that have touchpoints with families with children, whether that be relatives or businesses, things like that. So, before we go on to the next, are there any group questions specific to NPS? Those we can certainly circle back as well.
I, do you have a question? How will that be monitored, whether or not school leaders are partnering with parent groups to brainstorm, problem-solve, and create changes at the building level? Like, what's the process for that going to look like?
Sure. So we were able to share this information high-level with our leaders this week, with the next steps being that we'll be continuing to work with them, helping them understand the data. And then, they're really experts in how to engage with their school communities. Certainly, I think any of us around the executive team or administrative table will be able to offer suggestions as far as what can we do in terms of family engagement differently? But certainly, it'll be those schools' leaders taking that to their groups that they meet with on a regular basis, and then also brainstorming additional venues.
And from a system standpoint, again, the way that we're set up with our key performance indicators, as Katie is owning the net promoter score, so her responsibility is to look at the aggregate, right, like across all of our buildings, and to be able to make sure that principals are executing, you know, what we're asking, and to be able to help support those that may need some extra support across the system. So that's part of our new design with the key performance indicators, is to make sure we've got that central office hub, if you will. Because that also allows and plays really well into, you know, our communication plan and strategies around improved communication, and allows Katie to be able to be that person that can share best practices across the system, you know, with our principals.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. That's kind of where I was getting at, is like the accountability and support pieces on that. So, perfect. Thank you.
So, going into our culture and climate survey, so Katie had already said that this was taken by 1,083 parent and guardians. The survey focused on four different areas: academic environment, the school building environment, the school environment, and also inclusion. So, when looking at this, this is the breakdown as far as which parents responded, between elementary, middle school, high school, pre-K, and then also the grade levels of response, and then also the race and ethnicity of the parents and guardians that responded to the survey. So, let's cut right to the chase, is when we get to the key recommendations and the key findings, this is what the parents and guardians were telling us. So, number one is, provide more support for high-achieving and underperforming students. And that makes total sense, given where we are with our key progress indicators for reading and math achievement, along with our school report cards and our ACT positive scores, those focusing on those skill areas. Parents are saying their students need more support for both ends. Physical environment, investigate why parents of middle and high school students are generally less satisfied with school culture and climate, you'll see that in the data, than parents of pre-K and elementary school. Our pre-K families are, they were our biggest promoters when it came to school and the school district. And then the other piece, and this came through loud and clear in here, and we've been talking about this, our community members have been talking about this, our staff have been talking about this, is that we need to attract and retain high-quality staff with diverse backgrounds. Our students need to see representation in our schools and our classrooms from our adults. So, key findings. In the instructional climate, 84% of our parents agree that teachers want students to succeed, they keep students updated, they provide enough technology and resources, and that we are providing materials overwhelmingly across all grade levels. Our families and our parents truly feel like our teachers care, and our teachers are working hard for students every single day. When it comes to student engagement, you can see in this data, once again, this feels like a little bit of a flip here, but high school and middle school provide more extracurricular or club opportunities, and that makes sense, given the way that we are structured as a school district. And at the same time, we've been doing a lot of resources and emphasis on this, and our parents, 77% of parents and guardians agree that computer technology skills or technology pieces are strong within the school district. And at the same time, if you can see, when it comes to college and career readiness and the KPIs that we chose around work-based learning, dual-credit opportunities are spot-on, because our families and parents and guardians are indicating they want to see more of that for our students at the high school level. When it comes to student support, you can see where we are with English learners, special education, well-being, high-achieving students and underperforming students. So once again, our student, our parents and guardians are wanting to see more support for high-achieving and for our students that needs more support. And in particular, at the middle and high school level, they're indicating they would like to see more supports there as well. When it comes to the physical environment, 73% of the parents and guardians responded that students feel welcome at school. 68% feel like their student feels like they belong at school. Then when it comes to maintenance, our elementary parents feel like their child's school is mal-maintained. We get to the high school level, they're feeling like it's not as well-maintained. And then perception of feeling safe at school by grade level, when we go from pre-kindergarten to high school, that percentage decreases for when a child feels safe at school. And then my child's school has classroom environments that support student learning, pre-K with the highest percentage of agreement, and high school, middle school with a lower percentage. And then positive relationships, adults at my child's school, once again, pre-K and elementary have like the strongest agreement that they care about students and they respect, adults respect students. And then students at my child's school, this is like student-to-student relationship, pre-K and elementary, once again, have those higher meanings. Then when it comes to discipline, students at my child's school follow the school rules. You can see from pre-K to high school. And Mrs. Shendel, our Ashkash Early Learning Principal, was very proud of, 82% of pre-K students' families agreed with that. She was, "I don't know that we always feel that way about pre-K students," but they were glad that students are following the school rules. And then adults at my child's school consistently enforce school rules. You can see the percentage is there. So once again, there's that shift. And that's seen across the board, like nationally, when we were talking about like engagement and perceptions of a school, there tends to be a higher agreement or approval rating in early grade levels, and it decreases as you go to middle and high school. Parent engagement and retention, here are staff members at my child's school respond to parents or questions or concerns. You can see that there. But once again, this is reflected back into the comments that the Board has made tonight about how are we engaging parents. 54% felt like staff members were engaging parents. Then, agree that district attracts staff members from diverse backgrounds. Once again, we absolutely have work to do in this area, and that's been indicated in all of our planning. So here's one area that, like prior, like we said in my staff report, when we talked about, there was exit survey with parent, like if you had opened enrolled, we had done that prior to COVID. When we were doing this, we were asking, why are parents and families, why are students, why are even staff, why are you staying in Ashkash? So it's more like a stay survey. So we added these additional questions onto the culture and climate survey to say, what are those factors that are having you stay in Ashkash? And overwhelmingly, the highest rated one was approachable teachers, and then technology and equipment in the classroom. But throughout the survey, our parents, our families have a lot of faith and respect and support for our teachers in the classrooms. That was coming through strongly, that our families love our teachers. As you go down here about factors that are having families stay in Ashkash, you can see campus facilities was the lowest one, and we're working on that. So, and then here is an infographic of what's the most important factors when parents are considering staying in Ashkash. Number one was location, then proximity to family, approachable teachers, high quality, sense of belonging, the social environment, subjects, extracurriculars, and then school schedule. So those were the five, those were the factors that they rated within there. And then that concludes the presentation. Questions?
Mrs. Carolyn? I have a question regarding the respondent data pool. So the vast majority of people that completed this survey, I think it was 86% were white families, and only 3% of our black population completed the survey. And so, and 0% in some of our other categories. And so, I guess what my question is, is how accurate is this data when a lot of it is really being answered by only one group? And what are we going to do to get input from these other groups? Because I think input from those groups that are often, groups that need help in our district, we really need to engage them to find out what we are really doing well on and what we can improve on. So, do you have any insights on how we're going to get data that is truly reflective of our student population? I know that's a big ask, and it's not easy.
Correct. And so Katie had mentioned that earlier when we, she was talking specifically about the net promoter score, but in the overall culture and climate survey, we have to broaden our reach, and we have to, she even talked about parent-teacher conferences, engaging with families at different events, offering QR codes, offering to take the survey perhaps like in a focus group, or like one-on-one, but having different opportunities rather than just pushing it out via an email where you need to click a link. But how do we engage in different ways? And those are absolutely strategies that we need to explore in order to increase that.
I think that's important, that we hear from those groups in this survey, too. Thank you.
I have a question. I have more of a statement here. I think that it's really important to know and to understand why families are staying here, but what's more important is really that, finding out why they're leaving. And I, you know, when we do that, you have an option to really grow and be what we're set out to be, in a sense. You want people to be coming to the Ashkash School District, and when you don't know why people are leaving, you don't know what to fix. And so, I know that it was talked about, you know, earlier, and recommended that we maybe bring that back. I think that is very vital at this point, to bring that back, so we know truly why these families are leaving. I mean, it's really easy to assume, oh, they're leaving because X, Y, or Z, but without that data and without knowing, I mean, we're never going to essentially be where we need to be.
Yeah. I appreciate that. So I have that down from our previous conversation. So what we'll do is just create that process and make sure we start recording that, and then we'll include that in this annual report as we're moving forward, so we could put that up against our survey data, to make sure that we've got the, you know, 460 or however many open enrollment people that we have that are leaving. So that'll just be another opportunity to be able to cross-reference some of those reasons. So, I appreciate that.
And to add to that, so that is work that's currently in progress, so the meeting with our registrar, because for that outreach really happens at the school level. What are our secretaries doing as they receive those? And that's the point of contact that can really gain that information. One, they're most likely to have a relationship with the family, whether or not, regardless of if they're choosing to leave. And it's really that short window of time where they care about talking to us. I mean, we can't think back to someone that left the district a year ago, are they really going to respond? Plus, our means of outreach to them is little to none. We don't keep their contact necessarily up to date. So it's finding a way with that team, that secretarial team, to create a consistent process, and then make sure that we're doing something with that. I know there's pockets of, you know, data probably being collected, but putting it to action is that, that next step that really gets us to that continuous improvement phase.
And again, that's part of our process to systematize, you know, off of our key performance indicator, to make sure across the system, we're collecting that consistently, and then rolling that up into our board workshops and those reports. So, that's a good example.
I'm glad that we're gathering this data, because I can say with 100% certainty, and I know families that have left or stayed in the school district specifically because of culture and the building. And we weren't measuring that before, to try to figure that out. And we need to. This is just as important as, you know, a lot of the other work we're doing, because a positive school culture, I can almost guarantee you that that helps with literacy, helps with math. I mean, culture is so important. I had the opportunity to go to the West Homecoming Game at the New Field, and the culture there was fabulous. And people were talking to us about that event and how that helped, you know, with the culture in that school. My daughter loves going to that school. And we need to continually find ways to build culture within the community and within our schools, and to figure out if we're not building that culture in certain schools, why is that, and fix it right away. Because we don't have time to wait for 10 Because we don't have time to wait for 10, 15, 20 kids to leave a school because we're not being responsive enough. So, I want, I've afforded us using this data and using it to improve in every area we can, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a thought. We were talking about the change from elementary to middle school. And I'm trying to find the slide. But the cultural or the, sorry, I can't find it. But it made me think about how kids get involved and how it's harder to get involved when they get to the next levels. And, well, maybe you had it there. Like in elementary school, there's more support around the kids, right? They're in the same classroom every day. The teacher kind of directs where they go, how things operate. You get to middle school and it's such a culture change in that now everything is kind of individually led. And so, makes me think that maybe there's some steps in there that we can continue to hold hands a little bit, but help guide more so that kids do find their spot to do activities or be involved or whatever if they're maybe more shy and they don't, they're not outgoing with that. When I saw that, that was my, one of my first thoughts was I could see how that would be just different. We see substantial number differences when you're just changing styles of schools. So, I, you know, don't have a question with that, but that's just something that I noticed that.
So, and I think it's real inherent that we can talk about like engagement and you can talk about inclusion. But the key is, is does every single child feel like they belong within their school and within their classroom or their school environment? And that sense of belonging comes in many different ways. And the larger your school, you know, it can become harder, you know, when you get into like middle school, high school, et cetera. But we can do it and we can create an environment where every single child or every single teen feels like they belong within their school, community, and their school family. And that's, to me, and all of this, that's our number one job that we need to see reflected in these numbers. In addition to that, we often ask, is this disaggregated? Is this broken down by school, by grade level? Yes, we can take that data and we can organize it any of those ways. And that was the work that we started just actually Tuesday, yesterday, Tuesday.
I think though, that we need to take that a step forward. Not just so every child feels included, but we need to make sure parents feel included too.
Absolutely, very much.
Because they're just as much a part of this process as anyone else. Not just every child feels included in our school and part of the process, but so the parents do too.
And that's clearly stated in this as well, too.
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I know we need baseline data, but I have to say, I'm disappointed in this Net Promoter Score. I don't like being at the one star level competitive enough to believe that we're better than that. But that's what the data shows, so that's what we have to deal with. So, my, not only my hope, but my expectation is that these data will be used in such a way that plans will be developed so that when we're sitting here a year from now and we have a report on this, we will see progress. Just as we will see progress on district report cards from last year to this year, we will see progress on closing those achievement and opportunity gaps. And we will see progress made in the disproportional number of suspensions of specific groups of students. We can't just admire this data. We have to develop plans and we have to have accountability. Accountability is one of the responsibilities of this board. And it's time, through the key performance indicators and whatever other data we're using, that we start to see some real progress, some real results. Not just telling us about inputs and outputs, but what are the results and what are the direct impacts on children? We heard tonight that our enrollment numbers again are declining. We're seeing more exit than entering from other districts. We can do better. I know people are working hard, I'm not saying that. But I think we've got to figure out ways to change the narrative in those areas. And I believe we have the capacity to do that. So, let's go. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, our new executive team structure is set up to support that work based on our work with CISA 6, Continuous Improvement Process, our key performance indicators, you know, having leaders, who you heard from tonight, to be able to lead that as we're moving forward. One of the things that, as I've been reflecting on these numbers and some of the things that you had mentioned too, a saying that continues to resonate for me was something that Patty Vicman had brought up as part of our trainings before, was that, you know, when we're, when we have this, when we have any data, just a reminder that the data that we have refines us and doesn't define us, right? And that it refines us and it's a continuous improvement process. So, that allows us, I think, to, you know, when the numbers don't reflect exactly what we want, like we don't get stuck. And then when the numbers are fantastic, we don't become like, oh yeah, we're great, right? It's always that continuous improvement, you know, refining process. So, that's saying, stuck with me. And it's also in place of our core, in our core values as a system. So, I'm confident that we're structured in that way. And culturally, I know from an executive team standpoint, that's something that we talk about weekly, is what are our plans? How are we monitoring those plans? And then more, most importantly, how are we supporting each other to be able to execute what those plans are? So, I just want to thank, you know, Katie and Julie for their presentation and time on this. Again, this is new, so we have to have a place to start. I think having a place to start and having this data is better than not knowing, right? And so, that's what we're going to continue to build, you know, throughout the system. So, thank you guys for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know that some of these numbers are probably difficult for you to put up there going, oh, this is not, you're not proud of these numbers. I know that. And so, thank you for being so transparent with our community that we know we need to do better. And I know that through all the KPI, you will be putting plans in place. So, it's a very exciting time. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent resolution agenda. Very good conversation, board. Consent agenda. The board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at previous meetings. It will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately.
I move adoption of the consent agenda, please.
I'll second.
Herzog, right?
Salaji?
Aye.
Right? Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Mrs. Carolyn?
I would like us to revisit our meetings, our joint meetings with council. Those have kind of fallen off the radar. We haven't had one in a while and they take forever to schedule. So, I figure if I bring it up now, maybe we'll meet by next summer.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We will be adjourning into executive session. We have two items for this evening. Number one, considering financial, medical, social.
I move to waive the reading of the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll?
It's Carnes and Dewitt. All right, we've got Wright.
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Carnes and Carolyn.
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't going to do that to fast, I gotta.
That was great.